Okay, we'll go on to our final committee of the afternoon, which is Committee of the Whole. The Bellingham City Council Committee of the Whole has four items before us today. The first item is discussion of the 2017 legislative session. The City Government Affairs Representative, which is McBride Public Affairs, is here this afternoon to present on the outcomes of the 2017 legislative session down in Olympia. The city, by the way, works in partnership with the Port of Bellingham and also with Watcom County to advocate together for a shared legislative agenda and regional priorities. It says Tom McBride, but you're not Tom, you're Ben. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
All right. Thanks, Michael. I appreciate the opportunity to present to you guys today. I will try and keep the presentation pretty short. I'm going to cover some general things. For the record, my name's Ben Buckle. Sorry about that. I'm not Tom McBride. I'm a thicker version of Tom McBride. And so I'm going to, I'm going to present sort of a couple of general ideas about session and then dive in directly into the legislative objectives from the city. And whenever you make a presentation to any group, you try to think of a theme of what was session like, or, you know, what, what the issue was, or whatnot. And the theme for this year's session was sort of records. A lot of records were set for this session. 193 days of legislative session time this year. 105 was, was the regular session that was scheduled. And then it took three additional special sessions to get through all the issues and get an operating budget and a transportation budget signed and delivered and implemented. So as we know, the, the big priority this year was the McCleary decision. The McCleary decision was trying to get the legislature to fully fund basic ed. And that issue, as some of you know, that we're in Olympia this year, you couldn't do a meeting with a member down there without them saying, oh, well, now, hold on, your request may be put in the back of the file because we're trying to deal with, with McCleary and with basic ed funding. So you have to, you have to put that sort of in the front of your mind when you start looking at wins and losses for session, because that was definitely the, the high priority for all members this year. I know some folks, when we would make a request, it would, it would sort of be like, well, how much is it? And will that take away? Would it come from a source that would go towards education funding? So that's, that's sort of the starting point for, for the update. So in the end, it took right up until July 1st, June 30th, at 11:15 PM, for the legislature to get the operating budget, two-year operating budget, to Governor Inslee's desk for signature. That operating budget included 43.7 billion in funding. That's about 16 or 17% more, which is a record, than two years ago. So 43.7 billion for a two-year budget, largest the state has ever seen. For basic education funding, which all of us should consider a win, the session, 7.3 billion in new funding towards K through 12 education. That's good for, for all the kids in, in the schools across the state. The second piece that is worth mentioning in the regular session, the only budget that was negotiated and passed and signed by the governor in the 105 days, they actually let out two days early, so 103 days of regular scheduled session, was the transportation budget. The two members, one from the House and one from the Senate that write that budget, Judy Clivern, Representative Judy Clivern from Mercer Island in the House, and Senator Curtis King from Yakima in the Senate, get along really well and have basically started working on the transportation budget at the end of last session. So it was the only budget that was signed within the regular session. $8.4 billion in transportation projects. I'm happy to report that, and this is skipping ahead a little bit, which I probably shouldn't do, but I'm going to you, the Baker View northbound I-5 on-ramp, about $10 million. That, that project and the Orchard Street connector were two projects that were included in the 2015 Connecting Washington Transportation Package. That was a big, big package, about 16 and a half billion. It was our goal this year to make sure that if possible, those projects were included in a list that would be moved up towards the top of being funded. And the way that was written in the transportation budget by, by Senator King and Representative Clivern was if there are other projects that were due to be started last year or this year, and they weren't ready to be done, then that money would move to projects on the list that were ready. We are fortunate enough to have a great relationship with those two folks, that those two projects, Baker View and Orchard, were both moved up. They are three and four on the next priority list. So that's, that's a good thing, because as you guys know, the farther you get down the funding schedule for some of these projects, the more you start to worry if there will actually be money for them. So we were, we were glad to, to be able to get on that list and, and move up to the three and four spot. The other thing I want to, to mention at this point, in the House, there's a one, two-seat difference between the majority, which is the Democrats, and the Republicans, which is the minority in the House. In the Senate, as we all know, because it seems like it gets newspaper play almost every week for some sort of headline, the Senate is controlled by a group of Republicans and one Democrat that votes with the Republicans. They're called the Majority Coalition Caucus. And then one less Democrat for the minority. In the 45th District, where Senator Andy Hill was elected, he was Republican. He also wrote the budget the last few years. He passed away sadly from cancer. And so there's a special election going on, as most of us know, in the 45th. That is between a Republican and a Democrat. And that race, I just talked to a couple people that are strategists for nationwide campaigns. They said it is the number three race in the entire country that is going to be funded. It will be the most expensive, this is where we get back to the theme of records, it will be the most expensive state-House race ever in Washington State. Already, they're expecting to spend 10 million between the two of them, and it could go well beyond that into the 12 to 15 million range. The reason that's important, and sticking with the record theme, it's, it's fantastic, basically, if that seat goes to the Democrat in the race, the Senate will change majority and it will be again controlled by a Democratic majority. The reason that is important is because we have seen some things on our LO not be fully funded or not make it because of certain reasons. And so it'll be interesting to see how that race plays out in the 45th and what it does to the majority in the Senate. It looks as though, right now, in the House, things will stay pretty close to the same, most likely stay a Democrat majority. So that's, that's important to mention as we start going through some of these items. If there were new tax sources, new revenue sources, some of these things may have changed a little bit over the last couple of years. So keep that in mind with the, with the outcome of the 45th District race. The next thing I wanted to mention, this is sort of a general idea of session, the capital budget has not been passed. And that is, as I'm sure you all know already, is closely tied to the Hearst State Supreme Court decision. And I won't get into the detail of that, because I'm sure there's other people here that know way more about the actual decision than I do. But basically, it has become a partisan issue in Olympia. And Republicans are waiting for a complete fix to the Hearst decision and Foster decision. And Democrats in the House don't feel the same way for, for several different reasons. And so that has taken 193 days. They haven't been able to come to agreement on how to fix the problem that has been created, or if it needs to be fixed even. And that's sort of the, the interesting part to the negotiations. So either way you look at it, the capital budget has not been passed. And there are quite a few items, especially MACA funding in the capital budget, that is very important to us. You probably think I'm building up to saying that the, there weren't many wins this year. There actually were quite a few. But I like to put all the chips on the table before we get into the, into the weeds. So I talked to leadership as of late last week. They had meetings early in that week with, about Hearst and about the capital budget. The capital budget will be about $4.5 billion in construction money and cleanup money. And Senator Honeyford and Senator Warnock, both Eastern Washington Republicans, are leading the negotiations for the Senate. And a handful of House members from the Democratic side are leading the negotiations from the House. And a member from the governor's offices in those meetings, too. They said that they had better turnout last, early last week than they had had all session and all special sessions. They say they're getting a lot of heat from their districts and why they don't have construction money for schools and different projects like that. And so the sense is they're going to get there at some point, hopefully. But there's always a caveat with that from leadership that, you know, maybe we don't, we don't get there and there won't be a capital budget. And that means there also wouldn't be a Hearst fix. So just sort of the, that's the large overlying issues that we dealt with during session and are still dealing with in the interim. If you have questions about that, I'll take those at the end. Let's dive into the legislative objectives. Model Toxics Control account, MACA, like I said, RG Haley in Cornwall Beach. There is additional MACA money in the capital budget. It's not a lot. And when I went to look exactly what number it was, I, I couldn't figure out all the projects added together. But there is a, an amount of money in the, in the capital budget for MACA projects. It's not as much as we would want, but right now, that's all on hold anyway because of the capital budget situation. Infrastructure projects and improvements, I already discussed the, the street projects, the road projects, Baker View and Orchard Street. We consider that a pretty good, you know, victory in 2015. It was all, it was funded. And then to be able to move up the priority list, that was, that was good for this year. AIS, Aquatic Invasive Species Control, that issue, we seem to talk a lot about every year that I come up here and every summer that we discuss, discuss what happened during session. That issue gets more attention than almost any other issue in Olympia. And there are some reasons for that, as we've discussed before. It's one senator in the Republican Party that really cares deeply about this issue, and so do we. So that's a good thing. But the bill that was introduced this year would have put a tax on container ships, $100 per container. And so we ran into a really big wall there when we were trying to get additional funding for AIS. So basically, there's about 1.1 million in the capital budget. That would be a local grant situation, and that would be open to just, you know, cities and counties like ours. So that's a good sign that there's money there. But again, it's tied up in the capital budget, which isn't a good thing. And so, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna have to see what the, what the landscape is for the Senate control next year and see if this is still a very important issue to those members after we see what happens in, in the election. So moving on, fiscal sustainability. So this was the liquor and marijuana sharing revenues and protecting any other local revenue sharing options. This was, this was probably one of the harder and heavier lifts of session. There were a lot of folks in the Senate pushing to move that number down of revenue that would be shared with cities and counties. And this by far was not a, a McBride Public Affairs solo issue. This was WASAC and AWC and multiple coalitions of people getting together here and fighting against some of those folks that were, were having to make the budget decisions. In the end, there was no new increase in marijuana or local share options. However, the traditional sharing, shared revenue was passed in whole at 210 million. There was an amount of the marijuana money, about 50, it was supposed to be about 15 million. It got cut down to six. So, you know, in the scheme of things, not, not a win, but not as bad as what we had seen proposed at the beginning of session. The beginning of session, there were, there were a lot of folks calling for cutting the shared revenues to cities and counties in half, or worse. And so we consider that somewhat of a win as a larger coalition. The document recording surcharge, that's always been on the LO, sort of as a sub-bullet point of the LO. And that was done this year. That was the, the document recording fee was sustained throughout. Originally, it was cut from the, the original Senate budget proposal. Again, that was a group effort. That wasn't just two folks out there talking about it. That was every city representative and, and every city council member talking to members about it. So that was preserved. Thankfully, it will be one of the record numbers of funding for homelessness and housing, affordable housing, that we've seen in the state to this point. And then criminal justice and social services funding. The, I sort of already mentioned the, the housing funding as, as being towards one of the records that we've seen. The other, the other two places where, in terms of criminal justice, the Basic Law Enforcement Academy, BLIA, as most of you probably know it, was fully funded, with a bit of a caveat, that they fully funded 16 of the 18 classes. The other two could potentially be funded if there's enough, enough revenue that's still sitting in the account. So that, that's a win for everybody across the state to be able to, to train more law enforcement and, and fill the demand. The other, the other piece that was fully funded that we were really concerned about losing was the MSRC, Municipal Research Services Center. That was fully funded in the operating budget. Couple other things, and these are sort of past the legislative objectives for us, but, but made its way up to the high priority bill list this session that we worked on. The operating budget fully funds the left-two pension system. And again, that was a situation where in some of the early proposals, it was completely cut, or funding was moved, or they would take funding each year for the next six years. So that was, that was a good conclusion to that issue. Another one, for Bellingham Airport especially, the Real ID Act, that was going to become a big issue for airports in the state. I see a lot of heads nodding, so you know what I'm talking about here. They have, they passed a bill during, I believe it was during regular session, and it makes two tiers, two types of IDs. One that is clearly stated that is not for flying purposes, or travel purposes, or getting across the border, and one that is. They also lowered the enhanced driver's license cost. I believe it's $78. It could be 86. I'll have to double check on that. But they lowered the price so that more people could afford to get that, to be able to, to use it at the airports and legally get through security. A couple other, just issues I wanted to mention, two solar incentive bills passed, and a lot of thanks has to go to Representative Morris on those. That issue has been around at least four years, I would say. And he's never given up on them. Every year, he reintroduces them, cleans them up a little bit, shines them, and they get better and better and better. And Kelly knows that's exactly how legislation works in Olympia. It can be, it can be a decade before things are, are done right, you know, and, and perfect for everybody to vote on. Those two solar incentives, I believe it moves the, the date, the tax credit date out to like 2026 or 2024. I have it somewhere in all my notes here. So if you need that date specifically, I can, I can look at it after we're done. So those were two, two big wins for, for the local economy that really, I'm not sure go anywhere else. There might be some in Moses Lake, but it really was directed at this area. So kudos to Representative Morris and for being able to work with him so closely over the past, you know, four or five years on this issue. That was, that was a good one to finally get done. I know I'm way over time. I will just mention quickly, one, one more record was mental health funding for the state. A little over $100 million was put into the operating budget. There is some money on top of that $100 million in the capital budget. So again, if we, if that can get done, that, that would be fantastic for the, for the local area. $100 million for mental health, 26 million of that is for new staff at state hospitals, which, that's a big deal. That was, that was tied up in the final negotiation, the, right up until June 30th. When I talked to the budget writer in the Senate, he said that was one issue that they were having a really hard time getting agreement on. And so that, that's a big, big win for everybody in the state, $100 million in new funding to mental health. And then finally, I will say, public records. You've heard me talk about that one for the past, I don't know, three or four years also, maybe longer. Public records requests have been really hurting counties and cities' budgets for decades now. They finally got a fix on that issue so that fees can be charged to recover costs for printing, or for mailing, or for employee time to pull those public records. There were two bills. One has more to do with just the implementation, and then one was, was strictly for the fee to recover costs. So that, that was a big deal this session. And finally, we all love the Public Works Trust Fund. And a couple years ago, it got absolutely hammered, to the point where they were no longer issuing loans because there was no money to, to loan. So this year, a bill was passed that makes some changes and reforms to the, to the fund, but shows interest from both parties and both chambers that they want to bring the Public Works Trust Fund back in its full glory that it was 10 years ago, five years ago. And a project list is fully funded in the capital budget. So again, it's not a done deal, but it's also a step in the right direction if they can get the negotiations done on, on the capital budget this year. So I'll stop there. And I've got a lot more detail. If you need the numbers, let me know. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. Council members? April?
So the, I, I think I heard a number, another record was that Watcom County is, when everything's finalized, should be receiving around $80 million in benefits. And it was one of the largest years for us. Is that, is that a correct number, or?
Gosh, I-
Well, that's what I was confused about when I was reading, because I'm still learning about all the different things. But I know a lot of our projects got funded and then in talking with one of our representatives, saying that we broke a record as well getting those funding.
I mean, that could easily be correct. I, I probably should, but I don't add up how much money is coming directly to Watcom County. I try to stay out of that. But that would, that could be close. I mean, actually, I would think that might be low, considering some of the-
The larger projects.
-road projects and some of the MACA cleanup projects and things like that. That number may remove some of the MACA money that isn't currently passed in the, that's sitting in the capital budget. So, but yeah, I mean, like I say, when you have a record spending, record funding operating budget, right? So last year, two years ago, it was 38 billion. Now we're at 43.7. I, I could easily see where that number is what will come into the county.
I'd like to bring up Brian Heinrich from the mayor's office. We had a little discussion about a presentation a while ago from Brian Henshaw, Finance Director. It had to do with estimates of capital budget requests from Bellingham and Watcom County that are, that are tied up. I don't know, Brian, if you had a chance to find those numbers?
I do. Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office. You might recall last week during Brian's presentation, there's $12 million in a loan for the pretreatment water facility, another $10 million in, in water quality grants, a variety of, of projects. And then, as Ben mentioned, the MACA dollars, I want to say around $9 million. So we pretty, pretty quickly approached $30 million in unfunded capital projects, just for, for Bellingham, really. And then to Councilmember Barker's question, I know from a Watcom County perspective, the mental health triage facility, maybe 10 or 12 million dollar project there, Swift Creek. Do you recall, Ben, maybe another 10 million?
About 10.
I mean, so pretty quickly now, we're at 50. And that's just, you know, a list off the top of our heads. So it's, it's substantial.
So I guess, Ben, my question to you is, I'd like the city to deliver the message of our pain and impacts. I assume you already have. Is there a utility in continuing to deliver that message now, next week, during the summer, and, and in the fall?
Yeah. And Michael, that's exactly right. That's, that's a great point. And like I said, Tom's not here today, actually, because he's in meeting with members from Olympia. And we are talking to leadership still. And I mean, it's, they're, I'm sure they're getting, getting it from all angles on not being able to get this issue done. I have regular conversations with members in both chambers and their leadership and how important the capital budget is, especially to here. But I mean, to be honest, it is, every city has a project in the capital budget, it seems like. So they're, they're hearing it from 200-plus cities across the state that they need to find a solution to this.
So I guess I, an entertaining idea of making a motion that we ask the administration to write that letter. Maybe it's not much we can do. Kelly, do you have any thoughts on that?
I think I already asked Brian to do that.
Okay.
To both sets of our legislators, to thank the House members for voting for the capital budget with our projects in it, and then to let our senators know how important they all were. We could do it again.
Yeah. No, I think it's a matter of delivering the same message again in a different form. If you have no objection, I'm going to make a motion to ask the City Council to authorize that we sign on to that letter.
Okay.
Delivering a list of our capital projects are held up and making a request.
We'll, we'll re, we'll take, we'll resubmit it and let you all sign it.
So that's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Whenever that letter is ready. Dan?
Clarification. Ben, thanks for your presentation this afternoon. Of the $100 million for mental health, what, what part of that is from the marijuana tax?
Has been what?
What, what part of that is from the marijuana tax?
Ooh. That I don't know off the top of my head. I'll have to get back to you on that.
All right. It's just, it's frustrating to me to have, we have all these sales of marijuana here in our community, and the, the money goes to Olympia, and then it comes back to us. But part of it comes back, a minute part, if I recall correctly from the presentation, from Finance Director Henshaw, it was 80,000. Is that about right? So, so $80,000 is what Bellingham gets from all the, the sales of marijuana. And it's encouraging to, to know that there are dollars being applied to the mental health piece from the state level. But we have a triage facility that has yet to be built, that we could be, probably Watcom County Health Department would be applying dollars to that facility to treat people who need the help here. And we're, and we're getting deadlocked with that. So just, I guess I'm just expressing frustration.
Yeah. And that is well received and, and well taken. And we probably have more situations like that than I would ever want to discuss publicly, where money flows into a general fund and then is moved to other parts of the state. And, and so that, that frustration is good to hear, especially for Tom and I, so that when we're in these meetings, we can relay that to the members that we're, you know, we're hearing that from everybody back in District. But that's, that's well received and, and fully understood on our part.
Thank you.
Roxanne?
In that same line, I was just going to say that I am willing to get in line with the very many local electives that are advocating, we deserve this money to fulfill the promise about public safety and community education. So I'll be, I know we're all feeling frustrated about this, so we're all willing to get in line. line.
Yeah, thanks, Roxanne. And the other thing to, to think about too, and, and this is, this is what we deal with on a daily basis down there, is the Public Works Trust Fund, the MACHA Fund. Every year when there's a financial jam, they take a certain amount out of those funds, right? And the interesting part is, Brian and Kelly, and, and some of you guys have been in those meetings with members in Olympia, and they say, oh yeah, we got to stop doing that. But at the end of the day, it gets done, right? And so it is a, it is something we voice in almost every meeting that we're in. Business representatives, city representatives, county representatives, anybody in the state says, if you have a dedicated fund, just leave it alone, and it will do what it was intended to do. And you look at the Public Works Trust Fund, that's exactly, that's an ideal, you know, situation to look at, because it was doing so well, to the point where it was beyond successful. It was doing more than what they had intended it for it to do, and then they swept it when we were, you know, in a really tight jam a few years ago. So we understand.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further discussion on this? Ben, thanks for coming up. Say hello to Tom, and we'll go on to our next item. The next item for the council that holds a discussion of potential economic impacts, providing wholesale water service to the Lummi Nation. The city contracted with Western Washington University Center for Economic and Business Research to conduct an analysis of the economic impact of serving water to the Lummi Nation at Slater Road location pursuant to their request. Due to the unknown nature of the Lummi Nation's proposed project, the CEBR analyzed different scenarios, determined the likely economic impacts on Bellingham. This is all part of the administration's approach to a processing request made by the Lummi to provide wholesale water to their development through a wholesale water contract. Where would you like this to start? Tara, or Kelly?
I'm going to have them go through the economic development study, and then I'm going to go through the correspondence that we've traded with the Lummi Nation.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Tara Sandin, Community and Economic Development Manager for the city. The mayor had asked me a few months ago to take a look at the city's best interests with a lens of looking at it from an economic development or an economic perspective. And so I reached out to Hart Hodges and James McCafferty. They are the directors of the, sorry, Center for Economic and Business Research, apologize for that. And they have conducted this work for us. There is a copy of the memo that they've submitted to me in your packet with kind of a thorough overview of that analysis. They're going to provide a summary of that for you today, and then we'll take some questions following the presentation, and then the mayor will take it from there.
So I jump in? Sounds like it's on. I'm Hart Hodges at the Center for Economic and Business Research at, at Western, James McCafferty. I'm going to jump in, and I, I always hate the beginning of this sorts of things, because you never know how to get everybody on the same page. So bear with me, as I mentioned a few things that are probably plainly obvious. We first talked to Tara about what might happen with, with new retail development up at Slater Road, and we said, well, do you think it'll be successful? The comment there was, I don't know, let's assume it is. I mean, so there's, there's a bunch of scenarios or possible outcomes that we really didn't consider. So just by assumption, we're, we're ruling out, I think, some really interesting questions about, is now a good time to be going into something like that? And we're just going to say, if it's successful, what might happen? And it can be successful, and there will be measurable impacts on the city, or there might not be. And the, the might not be is, or could be due to the type of development, or you could say, there's so much population growth, so much economic activity over the next few years, or however many years, that Bellingham is growing all at once, and, and this is happening too. We're really ignoring that possibility. We're just going to say, it's, sure, it's possible, but very, very low, low probability. So we're going to totally focus on some what-ifs around development up at Slater. And the, the story is obvious, I think. Bellingham captures shoppers from Canada, but also Ferndale, Linden, south of here, Skagit County. So if you look at retail spending per capita in, in Waukesha County, but especially Bellingham, you get numbers that you wouldn't expect, right? There's, there's a bump, if you will, from, from shoppers from, from outside of Bellingham. And the question that we were really playing with was, could you build something at Slater Road that captures Canadian shoppers that are heading on south to the premier outlet malls in Marysville, or just on down to Seattle in general? Could you build something there that's, that's so attractive that you're pulling more people from Skagit than you currently are, and even more people from, say, Linden, so that you really don't disrupt what's happening in Bellingham right now? And that's the question, and for us, there's no way of knowing that, so it was creating some assumptions. And there's really two layers of assumptions that are critically important. One is, what type of retail spending, retail development, and therefore the spending that would occur? And what's your best guess about how many of the people currently shopping in Bellingham would stop shopping in Bellingham and go shop at, at Slater? So we built a spreadsheet just to ask what if. And a lot of times, economists try to be as unemotional, as objective as possible. And for us, it's just math. We're not trying to say, this is good, or this is bad. And we're not trying to say we know exactly what should be done. So bear with me. What we did was that, I mean, you can look up in U.S. Census data and trade data, for every thousand square feet of a shoe store, or every thousand square feet of a jewelry store, or a general merchandise store, you can look up, what are the typical sales? And you can map then sales into either employment or something else. We stayed with the sales, because what we really wanted to find out was, suppose you move some of those sales in shoe stores, or jewelry stores, or something else up to Slater, and take it out of Bellingham, what happens? So we're ultimately going to say, a certain amount of square footage is built at Slater and is successful, so it has that sort of, your average level of sales. What's the impact on the city? Focusing on sales tax and BNO tax, and the, the local portion. And James, throw something at me if I get it wrong. One of the scenarios we looked at was 750,000 square feet, and we really have two versions of that. One is a broad mix of retail, specialty clothing, shoes, restaurants, a little bit of general merchandise, so a wide range of retail types. And then we also said, what if it's virtually all large, big box, general merchandise, retail, and some restaurants? And I'll, I'll show some numbers in a moment. So if you have 750,000 square feet of new retail and restaurants, and it's broadly mixed across retail types, and you assume 50% of the sales that occur there are from new shoppers, and 50%, you can read this, and 50% are those who are currently shopping in the county, should say Bellingham there, sorry. Tax revenues could fall between 800,000 and 1.6 million per year. The more important assumption, in, in all cases, is that percent that you assume moves from currently shopping in Bellingham to shopping in the new area, much more so than the retail type. So if, in this, in this table that I'm showing, if you vary the mix of retail a little bit one way or another, you get very, very small changes in the numbers. So the exact square footage of shoe store versus specialty clothing versus something else is not, not very important. If you, if you go from a mix of retail to, say, all Walmart, you get a noticeable change, and you can, you can see the difference there. The, I think the more important assumptions were, if you take 40% of the, of the sales at this new facility or facilities from Bellingham, you get 300,000 to almost 800,000 in, in lost sales tax revenue and BNO tax. 50%, you see the numbers, and we would, we don't know whether the right number is 30, 40, 50, so we just, we're showing a range. And part of the reason it's, we have to just show a range, is you can picture, suppose Walmart opens a new supercenter at Slater. We don't know if they keep the current Walmart on Meridian open or not, and we don't know if they keep it open, how shopping behavior will actually vary, right? So we have a pretty, a pretty wide range of, of numbers, and I don't think there's any way around that.
So one of the things I want to highlight here, is Hart can take a breath. It's the dollar value that people spend that we're talking about, not necessarily people. It's not 40% of the people shop there. 100% of the people could decide to shop somewhere else. It's all about how much they spend there. And so we're talking about what percentage of their spending shifts, not the number of people. And so you got to keep that in your mind a little bit separate too, because we really did just stay with the dollar amounts in the, in the analysis, so that it has really no connectivity to the number of people.
And we'll, we'll get Tara in trouble, because she now has a copy of the spreadsheet. You can say, Tara, what if you make that 30% and, or 25%? She can run the numbers for you. Going back to, will it be successful? I think there are a lot of questions that we really didn't dig into that are, on a lot of levels, more, more fun. I think everybody knows what's happening in retail today. The U.S. is sort of overbuilt in the, in the retail sector. At the same time, you're seeing people change their habits, and it's not only going digital, it's going quite mobile. So what's the demand? Don't know. We can get into that. We, we mentioned that a little bit in some trends in the, in the memo itself. We didn't look as much at what if there are business, what if the emphasis is, is more business rather than retail? Medical space, for example. There's an interesting conversation to be had, I think, about what sort of population growth, what sort of economic development, and I want to say economic growth, would be needed to, to push or allow that kind of additional office space, medical space between here and Ferndale. The little small bullet that we have, that the business case for Bellingham, Waukesha County, isn't obvious. If you think about Seattle being full, and surely we can attract some businesses or something from, from Seattle, it's worth asking, well, somebody's going to give up the benefits of being in Seattle, the, the benefits of co-locating with workers of similar type. And once you say, we're willing to sever that, we're willing to look elsewhere, you have to ask, is Bellingham the right sort of next place? So it's a, it's a more nuanced discussion than just, oh, Seattle's getting crowded, we want to just inch our way out. It's, it's a bigger, bigger question.
And don't take the first question lightly on whether or not that I'm willing to give up that co-location, because there's a lot of businesses in Seattle that have actually called back their remote workers back to working in their buildings, because they want them to interact with, with other companies' employees, because they're seeing a very positive effect for their own companies because of that co, because they're nearby each other. And so a lot of companies, some national and some just regional ones, have actually told their teleworkers they want them back in their offices. And so that's a trend. And so Hart didn't use his joke, which I was waiting for, was, if you think Seattle's full, have you been to Shanghai? Because Seattle is not full. So the whole notion of, well, people are just going to move, is, is built on a fallacy, that, that's just not the reality. Now, we have net migration into the state, that has to go somewhere. And those people have to be attached to places they can afford to live, and afford to have a lifestyle they want to have. And so that pushes people out, and how much they will, how far are you willing to commute for that?
And I think all these conversations come swirling together. It's not just a matter of, oh, if the Nike outlet were here, instead of in Burlington or Marysville, people would stop here. There are reasons people go farther south. Some of the scenarios that we were looking at included hotels, and we couldn't do the same sort of thousand square feet of hotels has this, drives this kind of spending. Different hotels have very different models, and so we had to assume, it's, I guess, a polite way of saying, we were trying to avoid discussion about hotels, because we didn't have much to stand on, in terms of vacancies and, and room rates and impacts. One thing we'll mention or highlight is that not all the scenarios we considered had large negative impacts on the city. We were, because we were talking to real estate developers and others, and said, it was both, if, if something that competes directly with Bellis Fair goes in there, what happens? And the conversations ranged from, we move a little bit of sales, to you could reach tipping points, whole stores could close, things could really change, which is worthy of some, some conversation. But also, people came up with ideas like, well, what about sports complexes that could house long weekends of volleyball, or basketball tournaments, and so on, that have restaurants and sports bars, and things that don't really compete all that much with what's happening or exists in, in Bellingham? So the numbers in most of the tables focus on the retail side, the conversation's actually So with that, we'll admit right up front that, that the development mix is unknown. We were having to just take some stabs at different scenarios for different mixes of retail. If you focus on retail, we think you'd see a, a loss between 300,000 or 1.6 million per year, a big range, because we're assuming anywhere from 30% or 40% of sort of leakage, if you will, to a much bigger percentage. And that is where we are.
Okay, thank you, Hart. Should we have questions on this topic first? This economic angle is really only one part of the, the larger water service discussion. Should we stick on this for a little longer, or? Hmm? I'm sorry.
Yes, it would be great if we could just focus on the, the report for Hart and, and James, and then-
Comments or questions for Hart? Dan?
I spoke with a Lummi and Business Council member on Friday, and he indicated that LIBC had directed staff, their staff, to look at the feasibility of a water park scenario as part of the development out there. I don't see anything about that in this presentation.
We did discuss a Great Wolf Lodge type of, of product, and we don't think, although we haven't analyzed it, that it would have. It would, it would fall under that category that Hart just mentioned of, of it probably would not compete as much with what we have here in Bellingham. It might have a minimal impact. But I, I think what, I'm going to stress is, the, the city's not been given a development proposal, and so we really don't know what to study right now. And that, I think that's why the range-
Last slide, the last two bullets, when I said hotels by assumption, and other development types maybe not, wouldn't have a large impact. The Great Wolf Lodge is a perfect example, because that type of hotel probably doesn't compete directly with any of the hotels that, that we have right now. It's a destination-type hotel, not a business stay, and people in Birch Bay might get mad at me, but from the city of Bellingham perspective, it's just not a, there's no direct competition. So that's the type of development that, that can go in, that we wouldn't, I don't think we would see much measurable impact.
Thank you.
Other council members? Okay, and so I also included in our packet, should we go on to the next larger discussion? Also included in the packet was a, a letter sent from the mayor to the Lummi, having to do with points of discussion for the water service contract. And on Friday, I believe it was, actually Chairman Blue wrote a reply, it's not in our packet, but we received it by email, and I believe you talked with the chairman this morning. Maybe there's a different range of, of topics that are being considered in context. Do you want to talk about that?
Well, I just wanted to talk about, I didn't send the letter to the chairman, I hand-delivered it, and we had about an hour-long meeting discussing mostly the fact that I believe that it was possible to deliver water to, to the tribe, technically, we already know that, and there are some benefits. And the other interest was in the best interest of the city, and we had talked about, internally talked about things that the nation might be interested in, things that we might be interested in. But I made it very clear that whatever I was presenting here could be or couldn't be what they were interested in achieving, because all the things on the potential Lummi interests are all things that I've already agreed to with the tribe. So the, the chairman had quite a few, quite a few things to say about the things on our list, which was good. And then because there was little, it looked like there was little interest dealing with these, I said, well, if, if that's the case, then I need to know if there's interest in still talking or not talking based on what I'm going to tell you guys today. And I did not- And I did not see the letter on Friday, I was not at work on Friday, and it went to the general mailbox, so I didn't have access to it. But I did talk to Tim this morning, and I told him his, his letter was very clear. I did clarify that Ted had not recommended the water, because Ted recommended that we finished talking about the best interest of the city and the technical delivery. And so, that was the only, I said, other than that, the letter, you know, is very clear. And certainly, I see the direction that you're going on this. And I appreciate the fact that he apologized for not calling me, because I thought we were, I'm trying to work respectfully with the tribes on a administration, kind of to administration basis. And I asked him if he was still interested in trying to ask our council to give me different direction on, on what the discussion could be, because even in their letter, there's quite a few things that we would have to flesh out, based on some of the issues that he put that were a benefit to the city. We'd like to probably look at those ourselves. But, so, the, the main thing that I wanted to ask you today is to support me in continuing to talk to Chairman Baloo, to, to ascertain if there's any clarification we make on writing a contract with, with the Lummi's, if you decide to give them the water for their development. I think that it's an opportunity for us to actually talk about what they have in their letter in person, and have a discussion, rather than just trading paper. For all the negotiations that I've done in my life, just trading paper usually is not the best way to really understand what people are interested in. So, the, the chairman did what I asked him to do. He gave me a letter on Friday, basically saying that, to me, that this is a non-starter, what we were, what I had been talking about to him. And suggested that there may be a more narrow discussion to be had. And I'm willing to have that discussion with him.
So, let me just start putting something on the record. We, our Public Works has done, from a technical point of view, in terms of the infrastructure available, the size of the pipes, the water supply, I, I believe that they came to a positive determination on that technical aspect, and now we're moving...
That it was doable.
Yeah. Council members? Gene?
Just to get this started, I'd like to move that we send this request back to administration for further discussions with the Lummi Nation.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to send this back to administration. I believe, Kelly, you were looking for some discussion or some more direction. The indication with the tribal leadership is that the particular discussion points which you included, they're not interested in, in including those, but there may still need to be other discussion points with regard to the ability to sell wholesale water. And you're looking for those points?
Well, and, and also, I think, I appreciate the fact that we're back to actually looking at just the economy, so our economy, their economy, and not maybe some of these other things, because that's where I am more comfortable. So, yes, that's what I'm, I'm looking for. If there's a direction that it's an economic discussion, and what would be included in a contract with them on a delivery system, and what full utilities means, and, I mean, there's still, even if you narrow what we're talking about, there's still a lot of details to talk about.
Okay, so I have a number of points here, but Terry, go ahead and start.
Yeah, I, for me personally, I don't feel real comfortable of me telling the staff and the mayor, these are the points I want you to negotiate with. But I would agree with, I would like to see the negotiations continue moving forward to try to get something that is in the best economic interest for both of us. And that, and I think that's the direction we're moving. You know, I, yeah. So I'm not going to sit here and tell you, I want you to, to do this point and that point, because the staff has been looking at these issues in, in depth, and I think just as, I think Tim Baloo is looking at his staff to trust to sit down and negotiate with you on those interests, that's, I'm willing to go with that.
And I guess, I guess the direction, Terry, would be more, there's a bunch of, of variety of things that we started talking about. So if we're going to narrow that, and basically maybe not look at this list that's on here that was Bellingham interests, but talk about the economic issues, then that would be enough direction for me, unless there's specific things, maybe, Dan, not necessarily technical questions that you have, that you need to have answered, but just the box. So what box are we talking in?
I'm going to go with Gene, and then back to you, Terry.
Typically, we usually don't see these requests until they're fully vetted by the administration. Administration brings a council, it's either yea or nay. And I think we need to treat this the same way. This is somebody, it's a customer, it's an existing customer, it's coming forward and asking for more water. Should let the staff do their work and have them bring something back to us, yea or nay? And then we decide, that's, that's our job. And if they can work it out, great, I hope they do. I'm glad that the chairman and you are getting, going to get back together and hopefully come to a good, good conclusion for everybody.
And I think, I just think the other part of that, Gene, is, or not?
Or not.
That's, I mean, I, I just think there's, it needs to, we need to know if we're moving forward on this particular level, or we're not. And then, it's in the hands of the council.
Yeah, I can support your motion, but I want there to be an end date, whether it be our first meeting in September or second. This has been going on for a while, and we're to a point of having conversations, so I'd like, and I don't know if I need to make an amendment to attach it, yeah, a friendly amendment to have it come back. And Kelly, I don't know which September meeting works best for you, whether it's the 11th, or what would the next one be? Do you have a preference?
Peter would like to say something first.
Yes, Peter.
Yeah, Peter Rafado, Legal Department. So, having been part of lots of negotiations, discussions around these types of issues, these are complex, and you may want to hear some kind of update, you may not, but putting sort of an artificial parameter around something that involves two different parties, a lot of different scheduling, a lot of factors, I just, I would caution against that.
Well, there are two steps that we need to go through. One is the administration actually has to have a recommendation, and then two is negotiating an actual contract. So I assume we're actually talking about the first step, to have a final recommendation, maybe not the contract worked out.
So my motion would be to have staff bring back their recommendation on the 25th with the water, the request for water proposal.
Actually, it would be me bringing it back.
Mayor Kelly to bring back the recommendation from staff, as well as the request for water for the council to consider.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Well, I, I guess what I would say is, I'm happy to come back at a specific date with, with either my recommendation or the fact that we've made progress. I mean, I don't know if you want to...
Maybe the word "update" would be better. Does she, she come back with an update?
And you can decide that's not enough, April, that, that enough progress hasn't been made, or whatever, and I, then I'd be prepared to...
Well, I'll, I'll have my motion stand as it is, and, and I might not get support from council, but it's, it's for the 25th to bring back staff's, mayor's recommendation, as well as have the council consider the, the request for water.
My understanding of the main motion really was to come back with some kind of determination. And so, I'm, as I understand, the amendment is just simply putting a timeline to expect the recommendation to come back. Is there a second for the amendment?
Second.
Okay, so let's try to discuss the amendment, which is to try to set a date on this. Well, Terry, you've had your end for a while, and then go to Dan.
Yeah, but now I, now you got me talking on another question, but I'm going to do both then. But I'm going to, not going to vote for putting a set time that this is coming back with, because I know it's much more complicated than that. Yes, it's been going on, but we've had negotiations with the Lummi tribe about issues that have dragged, dragged on for years, for years, and we have not gotten any closer to it, and we haven't put timelines that it has to happen right this next week or in two weeks. And to, at this point, where we're just actually getting to the point, now we're negotiating, because we haven't been on the water issue, to say, to handcuff the staff and the administration to say, in the middle of summer, when we don't even know what part of staffs will be available to have the meetings from the tribe and from the city, that we want a definitive answer in this short a time. I think it handcuffs our staff way too much. And, my other point that I was trying to get to before was, I do think it is correct to negotiate based on these iss, on the economic issues, because these are pertinent too. I know we've had discussions about that, we would have liked Lummi Nation to sit down to negotiate and talk about over water, walkway and different projects, but one is not related to the other and should not be tied up together in it. So that, I agree, that it should just be economic. But these are negotiations that should happen, but separately.
Dan?
So, as relates to the timeline, so I submitted a, a list of twenty-two questions to the mayor's office, Legal Department, Public Works and Council. These are all specific to the, to the water request, they're not related to the other items in the, in, in your previous correspondence with Chairman Baloo. Is it, is it feasible to have these questions answered by the, by the 25th of September? There, there's a broad range of questions.
I have to admit, I haven't gotten through the twenty-two questions yet, so I couldn't answer that.
It could be a goal, Dan. I mean, we could, we could try to do that, and maybe they're simple, Peter.
They might be.
They might be. We just don't know.
So, the motion before is an amendment, it's set a, a deadline. I'm in favor of deadlines, I'm also in favor of being realistic. If the sky falls behind now and then, we don't meet the deadline, I can be understanding, but it's important to have a deadline, so I will, I'll be supporting the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment? Gene?
I, I'd rather have the word "update," because if, if you set a deadline and you're going to get an answer you might not want, it's possible. If, if, if it's going to take, I, I would be comfortable with her coming back, the mayor coming back on September 25th and letting us know where we're at. Rather than to say the 25th, we have to have a decision, that might be pushing it...
So I guess I need to clearly restate the main motion, and I'm afraid I'm not sure if, I, I read it as something more like a recommendation, maybe an update. I think we need to agree on the main motion, yeah.
My main motion was just to send, send this request back to administration for further discussions with the Lummi Nation. That's what the main motion is.
Okay. So then the amendment would be a report back on progress on those discussions?
April's already, we're probably going to have to vote on her.
Yeah, I, I, I think I'm ferreting out that I don't have support for my motion, so I will certainly, I will certainly, I would like to have a deadline period. So if that means bring the update on the 25th, with the strong encouragement that there's a recommendation and we can get through this business, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Okay, so I will now restate the main motion, the amendment. The motion is sent back to administration to continue working towards a, a water contract with the Lummi for wholesale, purchase of wholesale water. And the amendment now before us is to expect a report on the 25th of September. All those in favor of the amendment, signifying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We go back to the main motion, which is a report back from the administration. Anybody else like to say any comments? April?
So, in looking for direction from the council, I, one, I, I thought, I felt like, I know that Hart was doing the best he could with what he had, which was not very much, but it, there was some, if we're going to look at economics, I want to look at a couple of other things that I haven't heard brought up yet. And one is, there's going to be revenue generated, and that revenue is going to be reinvested back into this community, more than likely. Lummi people spend a lot of money in Bellingham, and I think that that needs to be considered as well as the revenue that will go into education and health services for Lummi programs. And I think we see the benefits of those right here in Bellingham. So, I think when we look at the economics, we need to look at the economics and, and not just the spending and who's taking spending from where. And I think there's a unique opportunity here to change a narrative in, in our relationship with Lummi, and working toward how do we, how do we be a partner, and seeing what Indian country can really contribute in an economic driver for our region. So, I'm, I'm really excited that they've asked a partner. I know that there's a way for them to get water without even coming through the city, and it wouldn't be as good for them or as good for the environment, but they're willing to come to Bellingham and see if we can't be a partner in, in making their mission happen of helping their, I think, just, just their, their nation in general. So, I'm really looking forward to your recommendation, and I, I think, I think that's all I have to say for now.
I, could I respond to that?
Go ahead, Kelly.
Yeah, the things you're asking us to measure are the same things Hart couldn't measure. So what I was thinking of, when I was thinking about benefit to the city from giving the water, was the actual money that would be generated by being a partner on the water delivery. I don't think that we can, we, it would be a guess again about what that would be. The other issue that comes up, and you've said this many times, and I agree, because you may think, you may find this interesting, but I've worked with the Lummi Nation for twenty-two years, and I've always tried to be a partner. Did we always agree? No. But I have a long history of believing that there's more in common than there is difference among us. So, in this particular case, I also think it's important for us to look at the economic development that we are going to be doing, not in conjunction with this particular request, but that is part of our interest, is being able to redevelop our waterfront, or do the things that, that, that we need to do too. Now, they're not connected, and I understand why they're not connected, to this negotiation. But I think it would be simpler if we agreed that we need to know what is the, if we're talking about a financial benefit, what is the financial benefit, and what is the financial cost of, of doing this? So we would know how to adjust rates or anything else that we need to do for the water to be used at in that location.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and recognize myself, take my turn, then we'll go to Terry and Roxanne. Okay. So, I want to start with saying that I appreciate what I think is now a more appropriate focus. These other issues are important, but I, I think, I see them as, as distinct and separate. Many of those things, I'm already supporting. I don't want to negotiate whether or not we support, you know, the Nookseak River rights. I think we already do support those. So I, I, I want to refocus on what we're now calling economic, but I think I also want to refocus on the infrastructural and utility delivery issues, the economic issues with regard to what the revenue means to the utility system. This overlaps, I think, with some of Dan's questions. You know, for example, there will be revenue when they purchase the water, what is the impact on our utility system, what is the benefit to our utility system on that? Also, what effects might this have on the city's use of the Middle Fork diversion rights from the Nookseak? I mean, that, you know, how much water, how much might we depend upon that diversion for future water delivery? And then that creates a bunch of, no pun intended, downstream effects, and I'd like to be able to understand those, and I think the Lummi partners will want to understand those as well, as we move towards an agreement. I've heard the mention that there's an alternative water source that the Lummi could be using. They already are using municipal water for other developments. I want to kind of understand to the extent that this follows the model of our current delivery with, with the Lummi, our current water contract and different, so these are kind of more specific questions that I think will need to be answered when we get to the contract phase. And then more specific questions like minimum, maximum water levels, and again, that has to do more with the contract level of the discussions, rather than the recommendation level.
The first questions you asked will be easy to, they won't be easy, but they would be able to be answered at the, at the update, because those are the nuts and bolts numbers. The, the alternative that Chairman Baloo talked about with me was the fact that they had finished most of their capital projects, add on the reservation, their large capital projects, so that they had money, that they would be able to build their own pipe from their own water source. It wouldn't be the cities, it could maybe be the PUDs or groundwater or, or something else. So, in essence, that was the, that was the alternative that I was, that was explained to me last week.
I guess for me, if it's a matter of how, that's quite different from a matter of whether or what, and so I'd like to understand that, again, when it comes forward on the 25th. So that's just the feedback and the sort of things, and they overlap a bit, I think, with what Dan mentioned. Terry, and then Roxanne.
Yeah, my comments was kind of the second sum of Aprils in that, about idea of partnering with the Lummi's, on one part... On one part, I think many of us in this room have been working with leadership of the Lummi Nation for years now to change that narrative of how we interact. And that's been going on, if we look at how our relationships have been compared to in the distance past. You know, we've been working much closer over the years and we've been working and talking individually with council members and the leadership of tribal members and things. And I think we need to really continue building those bridges. And I think one of the things we've been talking about since we've started talking about their development out by Slater Road and the water is to try to move forward in a more partnership kind of way in that developing a contract or whatever that will be mutually beneficial to them and to us. And that's how I see partnership. And if we can do that with our talks, that'd be wonderful, you know, to continue, try to represent those both interests so we can move forward together.
And that, that was one suggestion that I, that I would love if it happened was Chairman Blue wrote a very, a really good editorial in the Seattle Times. And basically it was about the decision that Ben was talking about in the.
First.
First decision. But it also got into managing our natural resources on a watershed basis, which we can all participate in. And I told him, you know, if that was the direction that he wanted to go, I was 100% in in talking about not just in each, you know, little jurisdiction, but as a watershed, how do these things all interreact? And the second thing was, we had a dinner a few years ago. In fact, Lisa, when was that?
2015, I think.
Yeah. So it was long enough ago that we definitely could do it again. But Tim suggested that we, that we have that kind of multi-participation dinner to talk about areas of common interest, which I said I'd be thrilled to do. So I think there's some, Terry, there's some opportunities, obviously, to have the bigger discussion, but I think for the 25th, I'm coming back with the smaller discussion. Okay.
Roxanne?
One thing that I think is great is that it's administration to nation. And this is a partnership that I think we would be so fortunate to have, an actual former partnership, formal partnership, that's not just saying, oh, we support tribes, we work with tribes, we've worked with tribes for a long time. No, I'd love to have them as an on the record partner. And that's why I'm glad we're going to keep working toward that and that relationship as we continue to improve that relationship. A lot of people in our community really support the tribal sovereignty and the work that tribes are doing to improve our community wherever we are in this county. And so I'm glad we're going to keep working in that direction and in that vein, in that spirit, and it's something that I'll be continuing to support.
Any further discussion? Dan?
To add on to Councilmember Murphy's comments, I, I agree 100%. In my discussion with LIBC member Nick Lewis on Friday, we talked extensively about incarceration issues, behavioral health issues, things that they're doing, innovations that they're, they're creating and things that we're working on. So I think there's a lot of room for working towards those partnerships and working in a, in a meaningful way, in a real way, because it'll help both, both entities and the constituents of both. So I agree with Councilmember Murphy.
Okay, the motion before us is to direct administration to continue discussions with the Lummi Nation on their request to purchase wholesale water service. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously six to zero with one excused absence. Thank you very much. I will report that out tonight. Going on, the next item on the agenda is an annual update on the rental registration and safety inspection program. Back in 2015, the city council adopted an ordinance which established the rental registration and safety inspection program, which is in our municipal code as section 6.15. Subsection 170 of that requires the director to report to the council annually on the status of the program. Our planning and community development staff today will update the city council implementation activities to date and also give us their observations on the results and issues and identify potential revisions to the program for future consideration. We have before us our planning and community development director, Mr. Rick Sipler.
Good afternoon, members of the council. I'm joined by Kurt Knappfeld, who is the Development Services Manager. And we have present a number of PCDD staff who are actively involved in implementing this program. Today's focus is to provide background overall on the program itself, talk a little bit about some of our operations in the first real complete era of providing both registration and inspection, give you sort of a slice in time snapshot of the numbers, because they change every day as we move forward, but get a pretty good sense of perspective on that. Identify the concerns that have been identified during the inspections. Specifically, talk about some issues that were raised by property owners and give response to those. Address the status of private inspectors as council recalls, private inspectors are allowed by state law to do inspections and the review of their work and issues associated with the quality of their work have recently been discussed in front of this body. And finally, talk about our anticipated revisions that the process. I should note that those revisions are both near term, things we'll probably come back to you with in the next quarter as minor amendments to the code, and probably more midterm. As we learn more, we get through a full cycle of having done all the properties, we'll probably look at the nature and duration of the program and how best to continue its good work. As council recalls, through council action in March of 2015, the program was established. It requires that all of the residential rental properties, and that includes everything from single-family homes that are rented straight on through to ADUs, duplexes and others within the city limits be registered. The program is to make sure that these properties comply with life safety standards. We have a checklist that's identified those specific standards that are associated with safety. In doing that, it's important to recall, this is not rating the aesthetics or the function or quality of some of the aspects of the units. This will come back in a little bit when we talk about the difference between the HUD checklist, for example, and our checklist. HUD checklist deals with quality of life issues and some issues in terms of ours is just yes or no, does it have a heating source? Does it have a stove? Not how well the stove works or how it's done. And we'll talk about the ultimate goal, which is a highest aspiration of the program is to ensure that tenants, all tenants in Bellingham have a safe place to live. We'll start off with an overview. That goal I just mentioned is to ensure that the rental units in our community are safe. And to date of the units inspected and corrected, and those units still pending inspection, we believe we are working strongly to achieve that end. We acknowledge this is a complex program. As you've noted from the summary sheet we provided to you, there are over 16,000 properties, 16,000 units on a number of properties throughout the city of different types with different ownerships, coordination, communication, facilitation, the logistics of providing inspection and timeliness. All of those things are a number of moving parts and we acknowledge that we do have a significant learning curve. This was not done in the community before, so every lesson is the first lesson. And our approach is to learn from those things we succeed in as well as learn from the challenges and mistakes we make. I'd like to suggest we haven't made any errors, but we have learned from our practices. We could be more efficient in the future. A good example of that is we sent out a renewal notice that looked like a letter and folks got the letter and thought it was just information, put it away. We now know renewal notices need to look like bills. And yeah, so I mean, those are things you don't, till you do it once, you don't know, then you follow up and you get it solved. I can say that my colleagues in planning and community development have been very responsive to these issues. There's ownership if we make a mistake, but the key thing is do we learn from it and can we do better? And are they all continuously trying to make this program the best we can? And that really means taking everything we've learnt about the lean process of continuous revision and refinement. We're not just trying to get to a mark while it works roughly right. Our role is to keep perfecting it over time, to acknowledge things change and make those changes. So when we talk about those short-term fixes, those are the ones we've identified so far. But I would imagine midterm we'll have a few more as we get through a fuel cycle and, and good, good programs can always benefit from focused refinement. We've provided you with sort of that snapshot of the number of units, the units we need to inspect. And I should note that over 2,700 units have been inspected. We're starting to get to the point in the process where we have enough of a universe from those 2,700 to come to some preliminary conclusions about the units. And I would also note that one of the lessons learned is that just having the registration process and the potential inspections prompted work to be done. And I think I've mentioned to this body before, my colleagues, the inspectors who are out there have found recent work done to bring the unit into closer compliance. As I tell my staff members, we don't care when it gets done, we're just happy it's done because the better result is for the tenant in the unit. We've passed 1,700 unit, we've inspected 1,700 units of which 1,600 have passed and those others are in states of play or we're working with the property owner or we're in the midst of it. And again, a slice, a moment in time, we've got those numbers. And the private inspectors have completed 1,021 units with 872 passing. In looking at the inspection, just to come back and confirm what we found in the first slug of inspections that came through, that first few months, most common issues are smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. We do have some, and I apologize for the typo, it's, it's emergency and rescue openings meeting or not meeting sill height, I'm not missing, and handrails. We have found some exposed wiring and had to have that remedied because it presents a threat to the tenants. In looking at our property owners, there is concern about the timeline for that once every three-year inspection of having to be there for, within the two-hour window. We've worked very hard to try to be as precise as we can and be spot on if we can at the beginning of that period. However, anything that takes someone out of their normal routine of the day, it makes them wait. I'd like to think we're much more efficient than the cable or phone company, which gives you, I think, the week or the day. But we constantly want to refine it more. When we started, I think it was a four-hour window and we went down to a two-hour window and we hope with refinement even lessen that further to reduce the expense to the property owner, provide for a greater utility of making those inspections work. Some were concerned with a hundred dollar inspection once every three years. We note that we think the intent there is solely to cover the cost of the program and the cost of the actual inspections. And there are a number of owners of well-run facilities. They, they own rentals that have stellar records, their units are well-maintained, they pass with flying colors our inspection, and they feel that in some ways, since everyone is lumped together, they're sort of taken, taken along with those few bad apples. In terms of the private inspectors, we have 26 who've been through our training and become qualified. There is an ongoing issue, and this has been brought up in public comment before the council about requiring the inspectors checklist. At this point, we just get a yea or nay that a property passed or didn't pass. And I'd last, like to ask City Attorney Peter Raffato to speak a little bit on that because we are considering and evaluating whether that is feasible.
Yeah, Peter Raffato, Legal Department. So this issue question was posed to us when we were first developing the ordinance. And in our review of the law, we went with the way the code is written now and without getting into too much detail. And if we, if there's a real push to try to change the way inspection checklists are handled, I would want to have an executive session with you on that frankly. But that's something that we're looking at. We, we, although I think that we're probably not going to be changing at least what's been requested to date in terms of getting those private checklists, I'm, I'm not seeing that as an option right now. So I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, did it take a question right now? April, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I think for the benefit of the people that have been asking for that, a clarification that even if we took that extra piece of paper or that extra report, if somebody passes the program, we don't have anything that says because you hadn't or passes the inspection because you did these things before you passed, we're going to do something different. So it doesn't change the ultimate effect of turning in a, an inspection at the end that passes the checklist. Is that correct?
Ultimately, no. You know, we have a number of properties and units that our own inspectors go through with a cycle of moving along to bring into compliance. And again, as council will recall, if it was a life safety issue that was immediate, so paramount that someone shouldn't be there, we would have red-tagged the facility and moved the folks out. We haven't encountered that yet. But we do have a number of properties that have ongoing efforts. And as long as they're working to come into compliance, and we believe that they're making those changes, since they're not below that immediate risk imminent threat and risk to the public, we'll work with them. Similarly, for a private inspector, if they find something that's a non-compliance and they're working along to get there, within the timeframes we have lot for that to be returned, we're fine with it. That being said, we are considering some auditing procedures and that may surface, that would come forward in some of the amendments we would do, largely because we may want to do some spot checks on some of the private inspector units. There are a number of issues, Peter alluded to some, but we want to make sure that we have consistency across inspection. We're not trying to catch people out that they've sort of glossed something over as much as ensure we have consistency in the way the checklist is applied. We certainly will enter into renewal and refresher training. We want to make sure that our experience of actually doing inspections is transmitted. The goal being is that either a public or private inspector, exact same things are looked at and the exact same remedies are applied so we can have consistency throughout the board. And we are considering a potential three strikes and you're out rule. If we do find that we have through our auditing process or complaints or, or code enforcement issues, a repetitive pattern emerging, we want to make it very clear that it is a privilege, not a right, to be a qualified private inspector. And if we have a pattern emerging that things are not in compliance with the same inspector, we really would like to explore sort of limiting that future use. So coming to those revisions, in the near term, we have, the ordinance that we adopted was the result of a great deal of work over time. Now that we've implemented it, we can consolidate and clarify a lot of the terms. This is one that really won't change the purpose or intent, but clarify some of the terms that were identified, provide greater guidance on it. We have things like the hearing examiner appeal and others that we can just focus to be consistent with other processes. And that's not unusual. You know, ordinances are additive over time and sometimes we have sections that dealt with an issue that's no longer there. So we want to just make it internally consistent. We talked about those private inspector requirements and we'll probably likely be bringing that back for your consideration. We also want to require a notice for listings. This is to combine both the town gown requirement and our desire to ensure occupancy, that you need to make zoning code. You need to be consistent with our zoning regulations on any advertisement for any of the rental units we have and that you need to meet the occupancy requirements in our zoning code and our building codes. It's a clarification because often we find folks responding, they were unaware of those limitations. We think we need to make disclosure. This would not require zoning to be, zoning would not be a component part of the inspections. We're not inspecting and you can't use rental inspection to ensure zoning is met, but you can provide information early on. In terms of our midterm revisions, those are the longer-term revisions we see happening after we complete a full cycle. We likely would like to see some consolidation of inspection and registration fees or their timing, because remember, we did this sort of sequentially. We got registration going, then we came back and did the fees for inspection. There might be a better way of, of doing it and still covering the costs and spreading the burden on that. The second is we, we're learning the actual cost of this. The second is, we're learning the actual cost of this, there's a number of things that we need to do internally, we need to sharpen our software skills to actually allocate the cost, we need to see what it looks like when you do two or three years of the inspections and deal with the public information and training, and really reflect that and say, is it up or down, or is it just right? Do we guess right on that? And we likely will come back after we've been through all the properties and are able to say, here's what we found, here are a couple of approaches that might address longer terms for inspection cycles of different kinds of units based on what we found. Premature to speculate on what those might be, but we'd want to see what the data would be when we get to the end of a three-year inspection cycle, probably towards the end of that, we'll know a lot more. So, my colleagues and I are happy to answer any of the questions you might have.
Thanks. Roxanne?
Yeah, I really appreciate the update. Just a question that I had, maybe not pertaining to those that you have inspected, but if, for example, you did find in your sample of what you would look at for the inspection, more derelict property, with proper notice, could we look at other units if it's, you know, part of a bigger unit system? Because I really want to provide protections against such situations. Or, for example, if there were two failed inspections in an apartment complex, with notice, could we look at other units just to try to ensure the safety throughout all of these?
Yes, that's currently in the ordinance, in a sense, when we do a sample. If we have a problem with the sample, we can expand the scope to our satisfaction to ensure safety. And I don't recall we've had to do that, but I'd ask, it's not come up yet? Again, the wisdom of looking at the whole turn, because I'm sure it might come up in the future and see how that works.
Thank you.
Dan?
There are 2,789 exempt units, my question is, what makes a unit exempt?
Those are typically owned by a public sector, housing authorities or other units. They have their own inspection through HUD and other means, they're fairly rigorous, and as noted by comment, they ask for more than we ask often, largely because of the nature of, they're looking at quality of life as well as safety.
Thanks.
Gene?
When we first discussed this, and I'm going way back to, I don't know, 2002, to whatever, we were told that when the inspection started, that we would see massive amounts of bad units. Now, if I'm adding right, the city inspectors have a 94% passing rate so far, and the private inspections have an 88% passage so far, even though we're not, you know, we don't know, we don't have the checklist or anything, but we've been told constantly that private inspections don't work, but if these numbers keep continuing the way they are, then the argument was that there are quote-quote "a few bad apples" in the box, and those are the ones that somehow, some way through this program, we need to get to. And hopefully, and I think, Rick, you're absolutely right, I have seen, where I live, I've seen other parts of town, when this first passed, boards and mortar started happening at some of these units already, that people were starting to clean up a lot of the units that they have, and I'm happy that the progress we're in. But when people keep saying that private inspections are just going to rubber stamp every unit, obviously they're not, if even just 12% so far in a small sample haven't passed. So, thank you for your report, and I think we're on the right track.
Rick, actually, related to that, you show the number of units that have passed. Now, they might not have passed the first inspection, we give them a chance to come into compliance, so I think that's really important to me, the fact that, and what are the numbers on that? The number of units that didn't pass on first inspection, but, you know, then did, you know, once the correction was discovered?
So, one of our challenges, we designed our package to get this up and running and do the inspections, and we were pretty binary on the way we designed it. In essence, we know who passes and who doesn't. It's much more cumbersome right now, and we hope to refine it, to be able to talk about how many are along the path to do it, how many have been re-inspected, and what's the duration. It's a manual sort now to find that information, is that correct? And we're hoping to write a script that would help us get better information. We're not as overly concerned about it right now, because our population of what we had inspected has not been high enough, you know, we're just, we were just getting going, but is on our tick list for the second year of inspections to try to be able to say. There's been a lot made of the numbers, the numbers changed the moment after I typed them, you know, and that's our challenge. So, our software we have is very accurate at recording all of the information associated with that pass or don't pass, but it's much harder for us to do it. Kurt, do you want to speak a little more to that?
I think that's right on, and I think, you remember, the goal of this project was to ensure that we had safe rental units, and whether or not that's taking fixes to get there, it's meeting the goal. I think that's what we're really looking for, is making sure that these units are safe for people to be living in. And we're doing that, we're seeing that with our inspections, we're seeing the improvements that are being made, we are understanding that it may take a second reinspection for us to go back to ensure that all the things get completed, but they are being completed, and we're getting safe units out of the program.
Your point is well-taken, that our ultimate goal is people coming to compliance having safe units, but I think there's sort of invisible successes. One invisible success is the brick and mortar fixing up the place before we even got there, and a second invisible success, we don't track the numbers, the number of units that were initially out of compliance that then came into compliance, and they may not show up in our numbers, but those are some of the invisible or untracked benefits of the program.
April?
Yeah, I think as city government, we need to really be thoughtful as to when we're asking for data, what we want that data, do we just want to know, it's going to be informational, or is that data going to guide us in what we're doing? And I think I agree with Rick, it's, did you pass or did you not pass? And I think what we would see, even though we'd collect that data, as you'd see, I had to come back and make sure that they actually put the batteries into the smoke detector. I had to come back because there was a, one of the bricks was out of place on a walkway, and they had to dig it back down and push it in. It's going to be, it's going, having a lot of different friends that are in this process and knowing some city inspectors as well, or the city inspector, it just, I would make sure that if we're going to get data, that it's going to be data that's going to inform us to help the health and safety of others, it's not just data for data's sake, because we could crawl down a rabbit hole there. I'm interested in page nine, require conformance with zoning regulations and occupancy notifications and property listing. Are you specifically getting at the norm more than three law here? Is this something that, is that what is, I'm confused as to the zoning regulations for occupancy?
Yeah, it's put here because six, chapter six of the municipal code is the place that could best do it, it was identified in town gown, it's dealing with a general statement that all housing should be consistent with zoning, and the second is, it needs to meet our density requirements and occupancy requirements. That includes partially the family definition and others.
Yeah, I think that concerns me, we heard today in our planning group that there are families that are doubling and tripling up, single families are coming together with their children, understanding they can't afford a home, they want to be in a, they're in a good school district, but maybe in a school that's not as highly impacted. So, I would, I think that this is something our council needs to revisit. If we're going to actually be actively trying to announce this to people and enforcing this when we haven't been in the past, we either need to decide if we support this, or if this is something that has outdated itself in relationships and the way families come together. I realize it could be a hot potato, I realize it's a difficult conversation, especially when we're talking about infill and other things, but the reality is, if people are conforming with noise and parking, what do we care? What's happening inside that house and what constitutes a family, I think is, it's worrisome that government is trying to get into that business of somebody behind their closed door. So, I don't think it's, I think I want to know how far we're taking this, and if we're taking it that far, where we're saying, hey, you got more than three unrelated, better, I'm going to come back and you need to scoot, then I want us doing something. If you're just kind of letting people know, like, because it's already on the books and you're not doing any enforcement, then I think this could wait, knowing that planning staff has a lot on their list. So, maybe you could help me understand where I need to go with that.
Well, I am going to, likely, my colleagues and I will be going forward in ordinance that will be implement these changes, and that'll be subject to public hearing before this body, and that issue will be discussed, I would imagine. My department is charged with enforcing the code, and the code as it's currently written until policy changes are adopted. So, we'll likely be back in front of you, and that discussion you just posed will be full and robust, I think.
Terry?
Yeah. Back to that question about people that didn't pass first time, I think one of the things, maybe the only thing, reason that that statistic is important to come out, is to, when the critics come to us and say, see, 90% pass, but they didn't pass the first time, and that therein lies why it was important to put this in place, because they weren't passing the first time, and the numbers were down. And yes, it's working because they're passing at 90%. So, sometimes for us to get those statistics, it is, I think, for that reason alone, it's important to get those, so that when the critics do raise those, see how everyone's passing, well, that wasn't going on to begin with. And so, yes, our goal is to make sure we get them up there, and that should be the goal, but sometimes getting those statistics does help us take on criticism about why we put this in place to begin with.
I have one final question, you said there was complaints about the $100 charge for inspection, do you have any idea what the private inspectors charge for the same service?
Question hasn't been asked necessarily just because I think we're trying to...
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, just identify yourself by name and give us your answer.
Hi, my name is Shay Flaherty, I'm one of the program administrators, and my usual response when I get that question from our customers is that presumably their fees are within the scope of what our fee is, it's just, they, I think, narrow down their timing a little bit more than we are capable of doing. I don't think people would be using the private inspectors if their cost was that much higher than our fee, and I can, that can be something we can put on the docket to investigate a little bit more, if that's of concern, just trying to get a better understanding of private inspector fees.
Well, if that's one of the issues we're examining, it could just be, people don't like paying $100, but it's actually the right number, you know?
And if I can, just on that topic, it does seem to be coming more from the individual homeowners who might own one or two additional properties that they use as a rental, it's those, that demographic that you hear that more frequently, because if it's a two-unit property, and they are both in the same neighborhood, they could be shelling out 400 bucks in a month or two, and that's a much harder hit for somebody like me that just owns an extra house and I'm renting it out versus larger real estate companies of that nature, so.
April?
It wasn't on here, but I think that we're considering an automatic renewal for the $10 fee payment, there's been some concern in the community that it's just $10, but to remember that every year, they'd prefer to just maybe have a credit card or have signed something like, I will let you know when I'm done renting, don't make me do this every year, please. Is that potentially coming up, or?
Yeah, that's definitely something that we have, we've heard complaints about that, that was one of the notes that Rick mentioned on his slides, of trying to combine both the inspection with the registration renewal. I have to throw this number out, because it's pretty interesting, I felt. For this last year's renewal, we had 600 properties that didn't renew, and that's a lot of properties that didn't renew, and it's, working through those numbers, some of those people just said, oh, I didn't know that I had to, and it's, again, it's us learning how to make this program work, refine the program, make it work better, and communicating out. That's one thing that we have to do a better job at, and we've looked at different ways of doing that, changing our letters to bills, using postcards instead of letters, so we continually are looking at better ways to communicate the program to the property owners, so they're better aware of what they have to do in order to be compliant.
Okay, thank you for the report, any further discussion? Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Our fourth item is a discussion of boards and commission membership requirements. This is a follow-up to a June 19th meeting with a city council meeting on that date. The attached memorandum identifies the boards and commissions for which U.S. citizenship is not required under Washington state law, and city staff are here seeking direction of the council regarding the elimination of U.S. citizenship status as a membership requirement where permitted, and direction regarding Bellingham residency requirements instead, or whatever. Who would like to start with this? Peter?
Yeah, Peter Raffato, Legal Department, so I think you all may recall, there was a, I think, a brief discussion, I can't remember if it was old or new business, but there was a desire to look at possibility, making some modifications to membership requirements. And in going back and looking at our code, there is a catch-all provision that does specify that requires U.S. citizenship, as well as three years of state residency and two years of city residency. And then if you go into each one of these boards and commissions, almost all of them have their own specific provision in the code, some of them might have their own little nuance, there's a couple, I think, that actually make an exception, if they can't, if you can't find folks in the city of Bellingham, you can go outside the city of Bellingham. But then I went through each of these boards, and basically looked to see if there was something outside of our code that would prohibit us from making a change on the U.S. citizenship status. And you can see then, and I apologize, well, I realized as I was looking at the packet, that the green and the yellow isn't that helpful, so you have another copy in front of you with that. But if there is a reason listed on the right side, that's basically where I said, okay, it doesn't look like we can change, we can eliminate the U.S. citizenship requirement. And the analysis for that is, in one case, it's, at least in one case, I think it's a civil service commission case, there's a statute on it. In the other case, there is this line of authority that says to be a public official or a public officer, you have to be a U.S. citizen. The idea being that there are certain rights that come with U.S. citizenship, those are political rights, and included with that is the ability to be part of the government. And so, that is where, and the main distinction, and you have to go through each one of these, is, is it purely an advisory body, or do they have some independent decision-making authority? Or, for example, in the case of the planning commission, they have a statutory function of doing, they're a research and fact-finding arm for the council. So, whenever you see a public official on the side or public officer, that's where I was, I went through and looked at the function of the board and differentiated based on whether they're purely advisory or not. So, that's what you have in front of you, and I think the request is for direction as to, should we go, do you want, do you want to see an ordinance in front of you that would eliminate the U.S. citizenship requirement for those boards and commissions that we can? And then secondly, there's kind of some language proposed, or a concept proposed, for how you would deal with the Bellingham residency requirement. And because it's only two years, I think there was an understanding that it was three years, but looking at our code, it's actually just, it's just two years, we could leave it that way and leave it up to the discretion of the mayor, when there's, having a hard time filling a position, then you can make an exception. We could draft language in the code that would allow that, but so that's where we stand, and we're looking for direction on that.
Gene?
On the Lake Wacon Watershed Advisory Board, we did change the language where we would allow non-Bellingham citizens to serve, isn't that correct? It's been a few years ago.
That's what I remember.
Yes, we did do that. Boy, this is a tough one, because, you know, if you're going to ask people that aren't citizens to serve on a board, and no, you can't do another, I don't know if we need to, that's a problem I have with that, you get into that. I don't mind shortening the residency requirement and take a look at these individually, and maybe we could do the same thing with those, but, boy, ultimately, we serve here at the people that are citizens and vote us in office, if we put somebody on the CDAB board, that goes to money that comes in from the federal government, taxes we pay, the people that, I don't know, I just think we've got to be very careful with this one. I understand the goal, but with all these that are in yellow and very few in green, I just think we might be, I don't know, it might not be the best thing to do, so that's just how I feel.
Roxanne?
Yeah, I'm interested in the residency requirement being a year, but I'd love to know what other council members think about that idea.
Right, because you only have to be a resident in your ward for a year to run for election, or you're, yeah, that's not a...
I couldn't hear what you said, Roxanne, could you repeat that?
Oh, sorry, I was interested in exploring the residency requirement for these boards to be for one year, since we only have to be here a year before we can run for the positions, and maybe that might make it a little bit easier to fill some of these roles that we're always struggling to get people to be a part of.
April? April?
Well, since these are appointed, not elected positions, I could support a one-year residency. And then we recently passed a resolution, or actually an ordinance, saying that we don't ask, don't tell, basically. We're not going to ask you about your immigration status. And it seems to me that if we just, if you fit that one-year residency and you can prove that, you can sit on one of these and the other stuff, more than likely you are a citizen. But if you're not and you want to participate and for whatever other reasons you are, I think we'd be following along with what we asked all of our staff to do, which was don't ask that question. So I'd support just the one-year residency, keep it clean and make it easy and maybe we'll get, I don't know, I don't think we'll get any more people. It's a lot of work.
But my only question to that is if we're not asking that, then why do we have a yellow list and a green list if somebody can get on any part of the list if we're doing what we said? I don't know. If we're not going to check up on it.
Dan?
I just want to clarify a question. I think we're over here trying to figure out the colors and, sorry. The Arts Commission is in green and that one can be changed in terms of citizenship. The Public Library Board of Trustees cannot be changed because it serves as a public official.
And they hire the library director, they make decisions.
Yeah, I'd support the one-year residency requirement. I think that makes sense. The citizenship component, I think there's probably such a small amount of people that would meet both the residency requirement and if they were or not a citizen. I think the pool of people who would want to serve on these would be fairly small. So I don't feel strongly about that one way or the other, but I do think that the one-year piece does make sense to me.
Terry?
I'm just going to mention about the asking about citizenship or whatever. You can easily state within an application for a board and commission that it requires you to be a citizen. You don't necessarily have to, when interviewing, say, "Can I see your citizenship papers?" or that. If they fill out an application, if somebody fills out an application that requires U.S. citizenship and submits it to be on the board, there are some penalties that can happen probably to them for, you know, if it comes out that, hey, they're not a citizen and they lied on this, you know? So you don't have to necessarily ask as long as you state, because state law says it's required, you know? We should have that as a requirement of it, but.
And that's what Peter was doing, is he was trying to determine who was really a public official and who was an advisory board member. The thing with the employment that's important is we don't care for your employment. You're not making decisions, well, you are making decisions for the city, but you're not making policy decisions or recommendations. So we want everyone to have the employment opportunity. So that's why we took it off our employment papers.
Go ahead, Terry.
Yeah, I got, just a question on, we were talking about changing the residency requirements. But before we do it, I want to ask, has this been a problem that it requires two years residency? Has that come up?
No, not like I'd say that's the problem. This came from a citizen who was concerned about the mix of people that were on our boards and commissions. We have like 33 openings or something. We have an enormous number of boards and commissions and we could probably look at some of those to make sure they're median enough that people, like the planning commission, we have 10 people that apply that want to be on the planning commission. And then we have some boards and commissions where we'd only hear about it probably if we said we weren't going to have that board or commission anymore. It's like the idea of talking about combining Greenways and the Parks Board or having Greenways Committee be a subcommittee of the Parks Board. And I've just said it out loud, but I'm sorry because.
Way to go, chief.
Yeah, I know.
That's a good one.
Because when there are changes like that, people that are, that likes the system, you know? So we're having trouble getting people to apply. I don't necessarily know if it's because of the residency, Terry. I think it's more because of a lack of interest or potentially we're not recruiting, you know, really doing any recruitment. We put it on our website and we can put out notices, but we're not going around to different places to find people to go on boards and commissions.
Roxanne and then Dan.
Well, just maybe for the sake of future applicants, I'll just make a motion that we would create a one-year residency requirement for boards and commissions.
Second. Any discussion? So that would just basically changing our current residency requirement from two down to one. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, six zero with one excused absence. Dan?
I'm just wondering, I doubt that people go to the city's website for fun or for whatever, you know? And I think that that is a method of outreach, is kind of probably not the best and highest use of communication strategy. So I'm wondering if we can just think about some other ways of reaching out. There's the Volunteer Center in Waukam County, they have a website, they push out emails to thousands of people. I mean, that's a way that we could be recruiting. There's probably others that I'm not thinking of, but I think that to fill these important boards and commissions, that might be a, facing outward might be the better strategy than not.
Right, and Vanessa is compiling a list of, as a communication director, compiling a list of other ways we could do that. And I'm sure she's listening to the meeting, so she heard your suggestion. One of the things that I think is important, because I do think being on a board or commission or being a city council member, being the mayor, they're all very important things to do. And you really want someone who really wants to do it. So what I have found is if I try to talk somebody into doing something because I think it would be interesting for them to try, they're usually not the ones that's hanging there until the bitter end because it was, they weren't motivated to do it. But there's a difference between that and knowing it's available. So I think the idea of knowing what's available, we could do a better job of making sure that people know.
So I appreciate us changing the residency requirement. And practically speaking, we're not going to get a new flood of people. So I understand those practicalities, but kind of at a more level of principle, I citizenship is one of the most important things for me and I take the obligations and benefits of citizenship very seriously. But that said, residency is something significant too. I don't know why we necessarily require a U.S. citizenship. If you are living in our community and you happen to be, I don't know, French-Canadian or Brazilian and you know a lot about transportation, I think you should, I think you should, we should benefit from your residency, from your contributions, not, you know, the threshold for us inviting you to participate in our community, I don't think it should be citizenship. I don't know why, I wouldn't have citizenship as a requirement. I would definitely have residency as a requirement. I understand that there are rights and obligations come with citizenship and those apply to all the ones in yellow, but for the green ones, personally, I don't think we need a citizenship requirement for that.
For the green ones?
For the green ones. I wouldn't have it. That's my personal opinion. I make a motion that we remove the citizenship requirement for all advisory boards under the city's control.
Second.
Well.
You just said all advisory board.
I'm trying to get to the point that there can't be a decision-making body or body with any kind of, you know?
What about?
Is that understood by you, Peter?
I would prefer not having to decide on every single person. I'd like it the other way, that we do the green ones.
I tried to say the green ones.
Okay, you said all.
I was trying to imply the green ones.
I apologize for this color thing, but I understand what you're saying. I think the motion is clear for everyone. It's the ones that we can change because they're purely advisory and they're reflected in green on the memorandum.
And we're still going to require residency and there will still be the less formal filter that the mayor of the council will vet this person. As you say, the people who step up, who are interested of their own accord and if they have something valuable to say to us, valuable to contribute to the community.
Any further discussion?
Michael, I just wanted to say also, what I normally do is have the board or commission vet the member so that I'm not just handpicking people I know or whatever, so that it's a good fit with the board or commission that they want to be on and then I interview them. So they get screening.
Right, and practically speaking, I don't expect a bunch of Brazilian transportation experts to step forward or anything like that. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
That passes six zero with one excused absence. Yes, April, go ahead.
Having served on the MNC before I was a city council member, I will say I think that's a huge value. I don't know if other mayors have done it, but to have an opportunity where you get to sit down with your mayor and welcoming you into this and telling you the seriousness of it, but also just that formal opportunity, I think, was so important and it actually motivated me to go further because I just thought, I'm sitting here with the mayor. This is so crazy. And I know that you're readily accessible, but I'm thankful that you're willing to do that. I know it takes a lot of time. We have a lot of people that turn over in those 33 positions that are soon going to be filled, so thank you very much.
Okay, that concludes our agenda items for this afternoon. We now move on to minutes for approval. We have one set of meeting minutes from the committee meetings of August 7th. Move approvals. Any corrections or changes? All those in favor approving the meeting minutes signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes six zero with one excused absence. Items under old and new, I'd like to start off by saying that a couple weeks ago, I thanked Mark Gardner for his work on the communications plan and significant changes to the city council's webpages, but I believe he was actually on vacation at that time. So I would like to, again, thank you actually in person and then point out to the public again that we have made significant efforts to increase our communications, both through hot social media as well as through not-quite-so-hot press releases and lukewarm-ish, I'll call them, websites. We've really revamped the, what we call the, is it called hot topics or current issues? Top issue section where we're trying to gather a bunch of information on some of the bigger issues that are rotating before the council in any given year. So that's that under old and new business. Any other old and new business? April?
Yeah, so this is something that we've been receiving emails about and had a few people come in, public comment. But in looking at the Historical Preservation Commission that is tasked with raising community awareness of city's history and serves as a primary resource in matters of history, the council's been receiving these requests from constituents that would like to remove or rename the Pickett Bridge with concerns that naming is celebrating a man who has a legacy of pro-slavery and had a strong alliance with the Confederate Army. And so therefore, I move that the council direct the mayor to task the Historical Preservation Commission to, one, work with the community to understand the concerns and requests to rename Pickett Bridge; two, research the history of the Pickett Bridge and previous council, because it was a previous council decision to name the bridge after Pickett; and three, bring a presentation to council of findings one and two, as well as the commission's recommendations on the naming, renaming of the bridge and historical documentation at the bridge. So I think that this is an opportunity for us to use our commissions to work with the community. It's been voiced, it continually comes up. I don't think it's something for us to dig deep in, but I think it's an opportunity. I've spoken with Marissa, who is part of that commission as well as the historical walking tour, and she's happy to work on that and has already been working on that and thinks it would be appropriate for that commission. So that's my motion.
Just a point of order. Could we, could this come up in the regular session like we're supposed to bring up new issues? You know, usually under old and new business, if you're going to bring up something, you let the council know. I'm going to bring up an issue and we're going to, at our next meeting, and prepare something so that we can vote on it, rather than wanting us to vote on something immediately to direct staff under old and new business. We talked about our processes, about no surprises, so that we, council's informed on issues and things and it makes a whole lot more sense. And that's, until recently, it's always been our process to, when I talked about bringing the flag up originally, I announced to the council under old and new business, I'm going to want the council to know, I'm going to bring this up next time and we prepare something so that we can think about and we see it ahead of time, we know what we're doing, instead of just voting immediately.
Terry, I think what you're saying is you would like me to move this into a committee and talk about it then?
That, or at least put it on the agenda so we can talk about it, instead of us voting on this right now just out of the blue. That's not a good process and we end up getting in trouble with when we've done those kind of things quickly in the past.
Okay. So what committee would you like this to go to? Or what part of the agenda, council or the whole?
Whatever you and the chair decide, but just.
Okay. So it's okay to put it on the agenda for next time? Thank you. All right.
Okay, so I understand the motion now. The motion is to bring forward to the committee, the whole, the issue of the naming of Pickett Bridge and the suggestion is that the administration actually work with the Historic Preservation Commission first. And I guess I would, if there's no objection, include the fact that, you know, there's already been some informal reaching out to our tribal members that either the administration or the Historic Preservation, that we need to continue to reach out to the affected members. If, there's been one suggestion, the bridge be renamed after someone who's Native American and has historical connection, you know, appropriate to consult. But all that would occur not by the council, but with the administration, Historic Preservation Commission, it would come back at some later date and then there might be a recommendation or might not.
I think we're going to talk about all that on a future agenda.
On a future agenda.
So I will put this, I'll work with you to get this.
Was there a second, by the way, for?
Yeah.
I hope I don't need to restate the motion. Do we, do you understand the motion before us? Okay? No problems with this? Okay, thank you very much. The motion before us is to ask the administration and the Historic Preservation Commission to look into the naming of or renaming of Pickett Bridge and its historical significance. Is that close enough?
He's confused.
Peter, is this to put it, is this a motion to put it on the agenda or is this to actually?
Put it on the agenda.
Put it on the agenda.
And it's going to be in green and yellow highlight.
To bring it back on the agenda, but I guess the idea is there's going to be a process before it's even ready to come back to the committee or the whole.
The vote on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There may or may not be a recommendation. What will be, we don't know. We've asked, the motion asks that the Historic Preservation Commission be included in that process. Recommendation be good.
Yeah, I think if we have a, if we would like staff to be researching this, it probably won't happen by the next meeting or the next meeting because we're actually working on the budget now. But if, but if you want me to work with the Historic Preservation Committee, we just have to make sure that there's clear direction about what, you're saying we're going to do it or you're saying we're going to research whether or not we should do it.
That's, so that's all I was asking for, but then I was directed by another council member that I need to do that, but in, on an agenda item. So I'm going to do that on an agenda item, which I think can happen at the next meeting if I work with you, but it'll be hopefully fairly simple in giving direction if we decide to do this, but in a different time.
But not necessarily doing the work right now.
No, it was just, you know, it's been brought up and I think it needs to house somewhere. I don't think it's for us to be dealing with even this much time, so I just, there you go.
Roxanne?
This is going to be very confusing for anybody who's viewing this, so I want to be very, very clear. We are not voting right now about whether we are going to rename the Pickett Bridge. All we are doing is bringing forth a proposal to add this to a discussion at a future council meeting.
Yes.
And then we might make determinations or we might not.
And probably not determinations, just direct staff to work with another body to come, to bring us back some information.
And I guess my personal take on this is less about research and more about a public discussion that would occur among stakeholders, interested parties, knowledgeable people. Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes six zero with one excused absence. Anything else under old and new? Kelly?
My old business is a few, a month, month and a half ago, I think I had brought forward something to you about doing a resolution or a proclamation for sea feast in conjunction with the Lemmy Nation and we could do it with the Nuksek tribe also, Roxanne. So it was from the Lemmy Nation's request. I had wondered if the Lemmy Nation would like to do the first draft, but I hadn't really heard back, so I'm going to have us do the first draft and it would be something that would come from the city, so it would be something that you'd support too.
Okay, thank you.
And it's old.
Anything else under old and new? Dan?
Just real quick here, I just wanted to acknowledge that the Bellingham's first pump track opened officially last week and some of the council members were there, not riding. riding it, as far as I know, not, but Jill Kittner, or Kitner, sorry, Kittner, who's our local Olympian, did provide a stunning display of skill. I just want to announce that for folks. It's a great resource for kids and families. It's at Waukun Falls Park.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to executive session. We've had two items out of the executive session. So now there are three of them, supposedly 40 minutes. We've been getting on it early. The first one is potential litigation, claim number 2017-12. The second one is litigation, Swaddes versus the city of Bellingham. The third one's collective bargaining strategy session. All three of those will take approximately 40 minutes, which, okay, so I'm going to say that I'll be back here actually at 10 minutes after 4 o'clock. It'll be earlier than that, I hope.